Welcome, everybody. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice President Daley. Trustee Henderson.
Yeah, Evan will be here. Okay, welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming. Apologize, we're a couple of minutes late. We were participating in a PTA forum on what it's like to be a Board of Ed member. We had a panel of myself, Jen Daly, former Board President Mike Jangulis, and former Board President Gillian Thorpe. The PTA sponsored it, and Lordis basically did an informal Q&amp;A kind of thing, and we just gave some backgrounds, experiences, reflections, just on what it's about and what it's like. So I thought it was good, informative.
She posted it, right?
Yeah, I think she videotaped it, and she's going to post that on the PTA page, so anyone can watch that in their viewing pleasure. But I thought it was informative, and we had what sounds like three serious candidates who are contemplating it, which is good. We have three seats up in May. The deadline for petitions is 5:00 on April 20th, which is a Monday. So anybody's interested, either give us a call, and we can share our opinions, and get your petitions in. The more the merrier. So, thank you. I will turn this over to Dr. Bowers.
So, good evening. We have, we're going to start this evening with an invited guest that's joining us from Monolith Solar. And have you been, if you had been watching last year, and there was a lot of discussion about the solar project that was going to hopefully occur or happen here in the Haldane School District. And in between those conversations and tonight, we've had conversations with representatives from Monolith Solar, and they would like to share other options for the original plan. So I will introduce to you Tim Carr, and Tim will be sharing some new potentials for us for the school district.
Great, thank you.
Welcome, Tim.
Is that my spot?
That's your spot.
Okay. Great. I'm just going to hand out something that will go over my presentation here. That's your copy. Thanks.
And I'm good, I have one?
You know what? This has actually got a little bit updated.
Okay, very good.
Should I get the spot right? Okay. So we could, I might, can we share? Because the members of the audience might appreciate having a chance to follow along as well.
I've actually got one extra as well. Ken?
How's this? Wow.
Sounds good.
Does it? A face for radio.
All right, well, thank you very much for having me come here tonight.
It's, you know, it's been a long process with the district and the solar project that we currently have in place, and I just wanted to come here tonight, as Dr. Bowers mentioned, and talk a little bit about where we're at with the program, talk about what's happened since 2013 when we signed the agreement, and talk to you a little bit about a new option that's presented itself from a policy standpoint, and what's entailed in that other option for the district. So what I handed out tonight is, you know, this is basically an overview of Monolith and some of the things that we do, and it touches upon the specific new option that I'm going to talk about. So what we currently have in place for the district is a power purchase agreement. So it's a solar electric system that we're contracted to install on the district's rooftops. We have a system for the high school, for the main building here, and the bus garage. And what this scenario is, this power purchase agreement, it's a scenario where we actually can install the system at no cost to the district. So Monolith handles all of the installation activities, the engineering permitting, the SED application. Monolith covers that completely. There's no capital invested to install the system. Then we enter into a 20-year term, and for that 20-year term, we actually sell all of the electricity that the solar panels generate on your rooftops. And the upside to the district is that the rate that we sell it to you is at a discount to the rates you would otherwise pay Central Hudson. So the way that our contract is set up currently is, we're going to sell every kilowatt hour we generate, every ounce of electricity, at a 25% discount to the rate you would otherwise pay the utility. So there's a huge benefit to it because it doesn't cost anything to do, and you save money right away. And I think a huge, a huge part of the significance of it is the educational impact of being able to show that the district is making a very clear and serious step towards sustainability. It's a real asset to the district as far as an educational component. We have monitoring that's attached to each of our systems, so you can actually see real time all of the electricity being generated. It spits out carbon offset information, so it's really, really great from an educational standpoint. So for school districts, it makes a lot of sense, and Monolith is working with a lot of school districts right now to do this. So that's what we have contracted for the district, and that's what we intend on delivering, a power purchase agreement. So the downside is that it's taken us this amount of time to get to the point where we're now ready to install. SED approval took a long time. It's taking a long time on our other district commitments, so that's been a point of frustration for us. Clearly, when we were talking to you in mid-2013, our hope was that by April of 2015, we'd be talking about all the savings you've seen already. So for that, I apologize, but we are dealing with a regulatory environment that's very difficult, so we now have SED approval. But what's happened is that in that interim, in that time between then and now, the solar industry has kept on evolving. I mean, we've been doing this for about seven years, and I know seven years is not a whole lot of time, but in solar years, we're dinosaurs because the industry is evolving so fast. So what specifically I wanted to talk about tonight, as far as an option that the district has, is what's called remote net metering. So this is an option where, instead of us putting the panels on your rooftops, we can actually put the panels off-site. So we can have a vacant piece of land somewhere nearby that Monolith can buy, and we can actually install the system on the remote property, the same amount of solar panels, and then every kilowatt hour that we generate there on that site gets pumped into the grid, into Central Hudson's grid, and then you get a credit for it on your bill here, even though there's no physical panels on-site. So the upside to it is that there's no facilities burden whatsoever. There's no physical equipment on-site, even though the systems that we would do particularly on this roof, a flat roof, it doesn't penetrate anything, it's very easy to maintain, it still has less liability, as I'm sure you would agree, to have it off-site. So that's one of the benefits. The other benefit is that you actually get more production off-site, more production of electricity. And that has to do with the fact that when we're on a roof, we're constrained by the roof, right? We're dealing with a roof that is a certain size, we're dealing with a roof that has certain shading obstacles or things on it that shade the array, and the panels are very sensitive to sunlight. So if it's shaded for half the day, it's not going to, it's not going to work for the half the day. So it's not on your roof, and it makes more power on a remote situation because we do a ground mount. The ground mount is on aluminum frame, it's attached to the ground, and what we do is, is we're able to, because we have so much freedom, we actually install it for the ideal parameters for collecting sunlight. So we have a 35-degree tilt towards the south, we face due south. So what this ultimately means is you get more electricity from it. If you have one solar panel on your roof, on this roof, versus one solar panel on the field or the solar farm, the one on the farm is going to make 10% or 12% more electricity every year, just because it's at the ideal conditions. So no impact on your facilities here, more production, and what I wanted to talk about also tonight is you actually get more benefit out of it, more of a monetary benefit. And the reason is because of the policy surrounding remote net metering. So what happens is, is you get, for every kilowatt hour that we generate on the farm, you get a monetary credit. It's not a kilowatt hour credit, it's an actual cash credit. That credit, based on 2014, is worth about 15.6 cents for every kilowatt hour that we generate. So we're making these kilowatt hours every day, each one triggers 15 and 1/2 cents, 15 and 1/2 cents, and then at the end of the month, whatever that aggregate is, you see as a negative on your Central Hudson bill. What Monolith would then propose to do is, is sell that same kilowatt hour to you for 10 cents. So you would see, instead of a 25% discount, more like a 33% or 35% discount. So what I've presented to the board tonight, I'm sorry, I haven't really done a very good job going through this, but the, so the first, the first page here, I have an overview of the process, which I've explained. We build the system at no cost. If it's on your rooftop or off-site, it's the same. You get the credits remotely on your electric bills. I have a slide in here, remote net metering. This shows you, this is an example of how that credit is applied. I have a screenshot from an electric bill. This is in National Grid territory, where we have a couple, where we have a lot of installations happening. And you can actually see that what happened in this month, we generated 4,900 kilowatt hours that were turned into cash, and then you would see that cash, that monetary line item, that negative on your electric bill here. So what our proposal is under this option, and again, this is just an option for the district. This is not, you know, the agreement we have in place is what we'll do, provided the district wants to go that way. Every kilowatt hour that we generate, we sell to you at 10 cents. Then what happens is our rate escalates slightly over time at 1.75%, which is far below the actual, if you look at electric rates in this state, electric rates are going about about 3% a year. So our rate's going up at a much lesser pace. So there's kind of two nice things about that. One is, you know right from the get-go what our rate is going to be from day one for the next 20 years. We can tell you the first year it's 10 cents, year 20, it's 13.9 cents. It's just math. So you have a lot of foresight into what that rate will be. And the nice thing about this, too, is we're only billing you for the production of the system, what we generate. If we generate a lot of electricity, we make more credits for you, and we're able to make more money. If we have a really efficient system, you're saving more and we're making more. If we make nothing, the system doesn't work, or it's, whatever's happening, we don't bill you for anything. It's totally tied to performance. So what I have here is a diagram, and this is just explaining this remote net metering scenario at a very high level. So in the upper left-hand side, it's a, you know, this is the solar farm. We build the solar farm for the district. The district gets this 15.6 cents from the utility, from Central Hudson, and then you send us 10 for it after you received it. So basically, the utility sends you 15 cents, and you send us 10 for it, and you keep 5. The district saves that 5 cents on every kilowatt hour generated. This is just a visualization of the rates, and I mentioned that our rate is 10 cents with a 1.75 escalator. That's represented by this green bar. The gray bar is what we're projecting utility's going to do, based on all the historical data, going up at 3% a year. And electric rates, you know, they're like gas prices. They go up and down and up and down. But if you look at a trend line, it's only going in one direction. And clearly, as the grid gets older, the demand increases for electricity, the commodity markets get much more volatile with production of natural gas and all of these things, then that rate will increase over time, the credit that you're getting from the utility. So this next slide, and I know I'm going over a lot here, this is a very different program, but this next slide explains what we call our floor. So what that means is, is let's say that credit you get from the utility, that 15.6 cents, what it is today, let's say that drops for some reason. Let's say it drops to 10 cents, and then all of a sudden, you're paying Monolith the same amount you're getting. You're not seeing a savings. Our rate will ratchet down by 10%. So you will see, in that example, our rate would be 9.1 cents, right? So you'll see at least a 10% savings, and all the upside is yours. If rates go to, in March of last year, they were at 24 cents, our rate would still be 10. Now, we do have a floor on that. Our rate won't go below 8 cents, and that's just for us to actually get the system financed. None of the bankers will finance this system for us and help us build it if it goes below 8 cents. So our rate, basically, between 8 and 10 is the play that you have. But for rates to get, if we get to the point that the credit you get from the utility is 8 cents, that would mean that the rates that are in the market would have to be from the early 90s. So it's something that I don't think's going to happen. Clearly, what we're seeing is that rates are only increasing, especially as the economy improves and things like that. So this, one of the last slides here I have that I'm going to go over is, this is just a quick overview as far as the economics for the district. So the first one is this existing scenario. So this is what we have contracted for the district today. We have, and I was speaking before the meeting, I think I may have mixed these up, but it's, we have a 50-kilowatt system that's approved for the high school, not the, I have it listed as bus garage here. We have just under 200-kilowatt system for the main building that we're in, and then we have a 34-kilowatt system for the bus garage. So we have in total 283,500 watts of solar approved for the district, approved in Nicurta, and approved in SED, and approved in Central Hudson. So that's something that's a go. I have an estimate of the production of kilowatt hours that that system is going to generate, based on where we are in the world as far as sun hours. So this system is actually going to generate about 311,000 kilowatt hours a year. And then I have an estimate what your savings would be, saving 25% on the rates you pay here. So about $188,000 is what the district is going to save over a 20-year term with no investment. Below it, I have an example of the remote net metering scenario. So this is the same system size, the same amount of panels, which is about, I'd have to go back, but I think this is somewhere in the neighborhood of above 700 panels, actual solar panels. But it's going to make 9% more electricity because it's at the ideal conditions for generating power. Then I have what our proposed rate is of 10 cents, and what the credit is from the utility that we're seeing today from Central Hudson. So you're getting 15, you're sending us 10 for it. The savings in year one would be approaching $19,000, and the savings over 20 years would be over $500,000. So this is approaching 200% more savings for the district by going remote. And this last slide I have is, you know, the benefits that we talked about. There's no system on-site that we have to maintain. We don't have to interrupt school activities to install the system. We don't have to interrupt school activities to maintain and operate the system. You're getting more power. And what's nice about this is you actually have the ability to expand in the future as policy changes. Because we went over the math, this is doing, I think, about 60% of the district's electricity needs, this program. When policy expands and improves, as it continues to do, we could come back and install more solar at the field and cover 100%. Whereas if we go on-site, if we stay on your roofs, what we do on your rooftops here is all we can do. We've maxed out the roof space, and what's interesting, one of the caveats of remote net metering, is you cannot remote net meter, meaning provide credits to, on a satellite site, to a site that already has panels on it. So as soon as we put a system here, we no longer can remote net meter to it. So I know I've gone over a lot, but at a high level, that's going through my presentation. And, you know, I know, again, I know there's, it's very different than what we were talking about initially, but that's the option we wanted to present the district. We would hate to see, you know, we can move forward on the current agreement, and that's great, but I did just want to make you aware of this. I would hate to have this done, and then we, then you guys say, "Well, what about remote net metering?" So this is the option that we're presenting to you, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, Tim. Any questions? I'll start on the right, go to the left.
Sure. All right, so, I'm sure Pete's probably got these already written down, I'm sure, but I'll ask him anyway, I'll steal some of his thunder. So you mentioned, if we were to go with remote net metering, does that mean you've got to go through SED approval for another 18 months?
It's a great, great question. We do not.
Okay.
We do need to indicate that we've decided to go remote, and it would be on property that Monolith owns.
Okay.
So there would be no involvement on the building side in getting engineering drawings approved, yes.
And Monolith already has this land available, or...
That's one thing that has changed since I was here in February. We do not.
Okay.
So the reason for that is, we own a site, we have site control in a parcel in Poughkeepsie, and the thought was to use that site to host the district's solar array, because we already have it, and we can start immediately. What SED has determined, they actually, my understanding is, is they acted on a project that's very similar to what I'm explaining in Liverpool, that they actually stopped. The host site needs to be within the district boundaries. So Monolith is going to buy property within the district boundaries to do this.
Has Monolith seen if there's any property available in the district?
We have about seven Realtors that are constantly sleuthing for land right now, but to answer your question, to be very honest with you, we do not have site control on a site today. But we'll make the commitment that we will.
Okay.
Yeah, and I know this might sound funny, but I would actually welcome any comments from the community as far as land that might be available. I know one thing that we're doing, we're doing this up in Husick Falls, we're installing in a brownfield. I mean, DEC, the state, really wants to see these types of sites, because there's very little things you can do with a brownfield. Solar is one of them. So anything like that, that's around town, that's nearby, what a great, what a great use for it as well.
Battery plant.
How many acres do you need for this layout?
About one and a half.
What does the geography need to be like?
You know, we want it to be, we want, the ideal is as flat as this floor with no trees, but, you know, we live in the real world, so, I mean, we just, we bought a parcel that was very tree-in, very kind of, you know, wacky as far as hills and things, and it was pretty easy for us to, you know, depending on the soil, for us to level out. So the ideal is that it's relatively flat and relatively clear, but we can, we can really work, there's a lot of play in that. It doesn't need to be, you know, dead-on level. It's something that we can kind of, you know, we can work with the land.
All of our wheels are turning. We're like, "Oh, what about that place? What about that place?"
Okay. Jim?
So can you just clarify again? So we can't do, can we do both agreements? Can we, we can, but they can't merge?
Exactly.
So if we were to do both agreements, they would be kind of two separate...
What would happen is, is we cannot, we can't remote net meter to a site that is net metered or has solar panels on it. So for instance, if you decide to put panels on this building, which is your highest-consuming meter, we can never remote net meter to it.
But we could do the deal that we had originally...
If, right, you could do that. Yes, absolutely.
In addition to, if we wanted to do both deals, we could do both deals, but they would be two separate deals?
They would have to be separate, and they'd have to be separate accounts. So let's say, you know, the bus garage is a 30-kilowatt system. If we decide, let's say, the district says, "You know what? Let's put panels on the bus garage." Then that's fine, but we're not, then we cannot include that in our proposal for remote net metering.
Okay.
And the thing about it is, as I mentioned, is, once we put a system on a site, that's it, as far as, there's no expandability, there's no, we can't go back. You know, what we would do is, is we're buying land, you know, we need one and a half acres, we would probably want to buy something that's more like three or five, so that we could accommodate an expansion if the district chooses to do that. Does that make sense?
It totally makes sense.
Yeah.
And so you would be buying, so separate question, so if you're buying property to put your remote...
Yes.
What if the school district decided they didn't want to do the program anymore? What would you do with that property? Sell it?
Well, the nice thing about it is, it's not attached to a building. So what we would do is, is we would find another off-taker. I know, I know off-taker is kind of a funny sounding term. Off-taker is what the utility calls the customer that's getting the benefit of the satellite, the credits. So what would, Monolith would do is, is if the agreement with the school district, for whatever reason, canceled or whatever, something happened, we would just reallocate all the generation to another, to another customer. And that's the great thing about remote net metering. It's not physically attached to the building, right?
Okay.
So the same is also true for you guys. You know, if you guys add on to the building or take away from the building, right, we can reallocate credits as needed.
So, good. So the ownership of that land is Monolith's responsibility?
Yes.
It's not tied in any way to the school district?
There is a, what we have built into it is a lease, a ground lease for a dollar a year, and we need to show that to the utility so that you can get the credits that are generated by the host site. So that's your involvement.
Okay. Good.
So just to clarify, the remote net metered farm concept...
Yes.
...can't happen in Poughkeepsie. It has to be within district.
Has to be within the district boundaries, correct.
Okay, which you don't have property yet.
Correct.
But you conceptually could put this entire system somewhere within district boundaries, and you need an acre and a half approximately to do the so-called 700 pounds?
Yes, sir.
That's right. Okay. And can you, if you were in a farm setting, let's assume it was adjacent to school property, is it something that is fenced off, or is it something that can be accessed for field trips, school use?
That's a great question.
Or is it like a satellite, or like, you know, these satellite towers that have these razor wires that you can't go within 100 feet of the thing?
That's right. Yes, this is a maximum security, no. It's a, it's a great question. And that was one point I was going to make, is that this is going to be a highly visible and visitable asset to the district. You're going to be able to take your students out there. One of the things that we're working on right now is, we want to have an educational kiosk there. We want, we absolutely want you to be able to go to the site, show the students the panels, they'll be able to walk around the system, go through the rows, they can see the back of the panels, understand the wiring, the components that are involved. They can understand it in a way that they will not on your rooftop. So it is something that we would want it to be, you know, the Haldane Solar Park. We do have to do, you know, there are certain things, you mentioned fencing off. We don't do fencing, but we do protect the backs with a mesh material, just to meet NEC code, but it is something that you could visit and would be an asset to the district on an educational basis. Okay.
Aren't you worried, well, you said there's no fencing, I mean, aren't you worried about someone vandalizing them, or...
We have insurance for that, and we're not actually seeing that be a problem.
Okay.
At least here in the states. I mean, it's interesting, I mean, you know, you never see someone breaking into a substation because people are inherently nervous of electrical components. We're seeing the same thing here. That hasn't happened yet, knock on wood, but, you know, that's something that's covered by our insurance. And we do set it a bit from, I mean, it's not right on the road, it's not, you know, something that we don't invite it, so...
Peter?
I'm deferring all my time to you. No, 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 actually, my colleagues have asked all the, most of the key questions here. But yeah, I've always been a big supporter of the project as it's currently contracted.
Right.
You know, I do see there being just a huge educational value, not just to the kids who go to school here, but to the community as a whole. It says a lot about the district that we're taking these positive steps to reduce our carbon footprint, and that's a very positive message that I think is consistent with the image that we're trying to create through the strategic plan and other efforts. So I see that as all very positive. So originally, when the idea was that the remote farm would be up in Poughkeepsie, that it seems, it just seems too far away, you know?
It's not connected to the community.
Out of sight, out of mind. It really wasn't working for me...
Sure.
...in that respect.
Yes.
So hearing that there's a possibility that it might actually be within the community...
Yes.
...makes it more attractive, but nonetheless, it does seem as though we have quite a few hurdles to clear before we have actually a real plan in place. Whereas, you know, one of our concerns, one of the reasons we were interested when you brought this to us was because we didn't have the SED approval for the on-site...
Right.
...option.
Yes.
And it seems like the remote metering could go ahead almost immediately with the site that you have. The tables have been turned now because we have the, we have the SED approval, but...
We don't have it.
There's an unclear timeline for...
Sure.
...what the remote would be. So that was one thing. And then on the cost, certainly, we know that if we go with the rooftop, we're going to save 25% over the prevailing Central Hudson. over the prevailing Central Hudson rate for life of the system. Whereas, remote, it's gonna vary, uh, if, looking at last year, it would be a thirty-three percent savings.
Mm-hmm.
The, the minimum would be ten percent savings, so it's gonna be somewhere in between
Right.
Ten and thirty-three over the life of the system, so this, potentially, there, there's greater savings
Sure.
For the remote option, but on the flip side, you know, those savings may not pan out, uh, and you may actually get a little less. So, I, I would tend to, being inclined to say, that on the financial side, it's a wash. And then, the other drawback with having it onsite was that it does require people going up in our roofs, which we just had redone at, at great expense. And, uh, going offsite eliminates that issue. But, in fact, I think, uh, the, the system as it's proposed for, for the school, uh, doesn't involve any drilling through, of, through the roof. Because these panels are mounted on frames which actually sit, uh, on the roof, and, and they're held in place by their own weight.
On flat roofs, yes.
Yeah. So, the only penetrations would be for the actual cables to, the conduit to go.
Right, the, which is added, and we can actually go down the exterior of the building too, if that's.
Okay, so. So, the remotes, definitely, uh, an attractive option for, for, from, from, in many respects, but at, at the same time, I see our onsite project as having many real positive benefits, and we're ready to move ahead with it. So, what would be the timeline, uh, if we said, uh, let's say, next, next week, we said, okay?
Sure.
We're going ahead with the, with the onsite option. What would be the timeline for getting the, the job done?
I would say I'd have to, I'd have to talk to our operations team who's finalizing our schedule, and we are facing a little bit of a, a lot of turbulence from a policy standpoint. So, it's been a little crazy, but I would say that, um, given the time of year, you know, we would probably be looking at a summertime installation, just 'cause school will be out, which would probably, you know, aid, would make things a lot easier. So, that's what we would probably be looking at, 'cause you're right, we do have all the approvals needed.
What about?
Go ahead, Mike, yeah.
So, you were talking about if you were putting them on the roof, what would the other timetable be for?
Remote?
Being, you know, you don't know what property it is yet.
I would say, you know, it, it probably, because we don't have the property, which is, you know, that's an unknown, it would probably be somewhere along the lines of four to five months. It does not take long to get a site to, you know, that we've, that we've been dealing with. It does not take long to close on a piece of property. It does not take long to get it ready for solar, and we already have the NYSERTA approval, and we already have everything we need to go on that front. So, you could wait a little longer, but the
Four to five months from the time you find the property, or from now, you think?
From, from the time that you decide, you say, you know what, this is what we wanna do. Yes.
You would presumably have to go through our planning board, including, uh, the village, the village over in the town. If you're looking at land that is not already flat and open?
Right.
Um, and it's an acre and a half?
Yeah.
If you have an acre
Yes.
And disturbance, then that requires a special permit.
Right, yep. Yep. Yeah, there is time to that. That is, yeah, absolutely true.
So, my question is, um, how is, so I have solar ones?
Mm-hmm.
And we have that here. And the way it works for me is that we use a certain amount of, you know, electricity. But, they don't give us a credit exactly, it just rolls back to you.
Yes.
So, there's no check from
That's right, yes.
So, how is this different?
Because what you're getting at your house is, you're getting an energy credit. You're literally making electricity that you're getting a credit on in your Central Hudson bill. The, the, the key metric is the amount of kilowatt hours that you're generating. So, if you, if you need a hundred kilowatt hours, and your system makes a hundred kilowatt hours, you're not buying a single kilowatt hour from the utility, right? In this scenario, it's a, the credit is not energy. It's not, uh, it's not, you know, the electricity produced. It's cash. It's a monetary credit. So, that's the real difference, is that the benefit is not in kilowatt hours, the benefit's actually in cash, in this monetary credit. So, that's really, that's the big difference with this remote net metering program. It's a ruling from the PSC?
So, Tim? I have a scenario that I wanna throw at you, and I'm not looking for an answer now, because I'm just throwing it off the top of my head.
Mm-hmm.
The district owns a piece of property adjacent to the campus called James Pond. It's for sale through Houlihan Lawrence. This is all public information. If we were to hear about possibly replacing the elementary, middle school piece with a ground farm at James Pond, but also keep the bus garage and high school project, is that conceptually doable?
Yes.
And what's involved in that process?
We would
The high school, I mean, the elementary, middle school panels won't necessarily have the value, in my opinion, educationally as the other two, because you won't be able to really see them.
Correct.
You won't be able to visit them.
Right.
You can't, there's no access. I've been up there, and you would never let a kid climb up there.
Right, well, right, probably any roof, you wouldn't really let kids up.
At some point, could we hear, and it doesn't have to be tonight, just how that potentially could work?
I think that's a great
Or not work. We have a piece of property we're trying to sell.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have some interest in it. You have a project, it's adjacent to the campus, it could be a really cool
That's great.
Educational farm with many implications.
And it's attached to the campus.
I'd like to hear more about that concept, whether it's, not tonight, because obviously, I'm just throwing it out there, 'cause I didn't know any about this. But if we could hear more about that, maybe in the immediate future? That's something I think would make a lot of people happy and accomplish a lot of things, but it's just off the top of my head.
Sure. I think it's a great idea. We could certainly talk more about that.
Yeah, I mean, it's almost the, the perfect solution, right? But it's not bad.
Michael has a question.
I mean, they would have to look at it, assess it, and see if it's something, topography-wise, we can give you everything?
It's, it's remarkable to me. I mean, I, I'm not a, you know, an architect or a carpenter by trade for a reason. I mean, I can't, I can't see things the way that, that people in that profession can. I mean, when I, I was amazed, we bought a piece of property in Pittstown, New York, and it was just totally treeted in. I mean, I showed up, and it was like, we just bought this? And today, I mean, it looks like a football field. It's incredible, the, and it wasn't, and well, this has not been a lot of time. This has been maybe two weeks. So, the, the clearing and the doing the land, that's actually something that is fairly easy that I'm seeing that's happening.
Okay. So, I'd like to hear about that concept, if, as to what potentially are the hurdles, and is it conceptual? I mean, if somebody took a look at it and knows what they're doing, and says, this is an ideal site, or you know what, it really isn't gonna work?
Right.
Just to hear about that prior to deciding on whether we wanna go remote, or staying with what we've already got approved. I mean, we waited this long. This could be a good?
Yes, and, and, uh, we would, we would suggest that with the remote option, the savings are gonna be very substantial.
Right, 'cause it's easy to build.
Well, it's easy to build, and the value's higher
Right.
With the monetary credit.
Okay. Good.
Does Mike, Mike, do you have anything to add? I know you've been kind of
No, I
Close to the situation.
The only thing I have to add, I'm, um, I'd be glad to keep things off our roofs. I, I just think it's, it's better for our roofs, not to have stuff up there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Some of our roofs may be possibly for a green roof, which also helps with, uh, environmentally and with our heating costs. Well, we don't have cooling costs, but it does keep the buildings cooler also.
Bless you. Okay. Any questions from the public? Any other questions?
This is more directed for the board. If you did sell the James Pond, a piece of it, we'll make sure you look into, is that gonna lower the value, obviously, to sell the other piece, 'cause that's contingent to paying for the field. And obviously, if I was buying a house up there, I'd be a little worried about having a solar field in front of me. So, just value that when they give back their report, please.
Yep. Thanks, Mike. Any other questions? From anybody? Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim, thank you.
That was informative. I appreciate it. Thanks for coming down, Tim.
Thanks for coming.
And thanks, Mike. You guys will follow up with, kind of?
Yep, I will.
Cool. Okay, uh, C2, budget.
Okay, so, as everyone knows, the big news is that the state has a budget. Yay. And, um, we have some revenue numbers, which is, which is nice. So, tonight, we're going to talk about what that means for, for Haldane. Talk about the state budget, our tax levy limit, um, other revenues, proposal one, which is, um, what the district is, is recommending. Educational enhancements in proposal one. Funding our reserves and appropriated fund balance. Remind everyone of the vehicle proposition, the library proposition, and, um, just describe the contingent budget. So, on March thirty-first, the New York State Legislature approved the fifteen sixteen budget. And Haldane, for foundation aid, um, received a point three seven percent increase, which was the minimum increase given, and that total is five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars in foundation aid. The largest, uh, increase in our state aid came from the restoration of some of the gap elimination adjustment, which is just under a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. No formula, um, aid changes were enacted, so, um, that's good new, news for us. And, um, that means that the district can recommend proposal number one. In the state budget, though, are some education reforms. And, um, I'm going to ask Dr. Bowers to describe those items.
So, some of the educational reforms that are tied to this new budget are still in a, kind of a conceptual framework, where they haven't been fully fleshed out. There is an understanding that the teacher evaluation system, um, for New York State, the APPR, um, will be changing. At this point, the only thing we know is that the, the government has asked the state education department to take the lead in that, um, creation of the evaluation system. The only thing that they've determined is that it will not be by the Board of Regents. It will be by recommendation of the commissioner. Um, and that's where we, that's where it ends at this point. We don't know too much more than that. Um, we do know that the recommendation is for tenure to move from a three-year probationary period to a four-year probationary period. Um, and there would be, um, different types of revisions, um, both with the discipline and the certifications that would come, um, related to tenure and the, also related to the APPR. So, there would be a, a potential for a school district, if they chose to, for a teacher that got two ineffective evaluations two years running, that the school district would have the ability, um, to bring that teacher, um, into disciplinary charges. That would be an option after two years, but it would be a requirement after three. The state aid increase is, is actually linked to the APPR, and we, we are assuming that that is the increase in foundation aid, not the restoration of the GEA, because that is not new money, that's just return money for the GEA. So, um, there is a, a, a date of November fifteenth, that the negotiations in the Haldane School District would have to be complete and recommended to the state education department. Um, and if we did not meet that November fifteenth deadline, there would be, um, there, there may not be this, the increase in state aid. For us, it's less than six thousand dollars, so it's not that difficult of a situation, but the, the district would try to make, um, every effort to, to be in compliance with that if we could. We would look at, um, there are new mandates, um, that are required, and again, that's very hazy at this point. What they're talking about is having independent evaluators that are also doing observations of our teachers. And we are under the impression at this point that an independent evaluator is basically somebody who's not the principal. But what we have heard at this point is that if it's somebody, I could be an independent evaluator that would come into and to do observations. It's, it could be Jen Wilson, um, it could be, and, and for that matter, Julia, because she would not be the principal of the building. There, there's also discussion that, um, if we wanted an independent evaluator to be, again, from within the district, Brent could go to the high school and do an observation, and vice versa. And then, the, the part that is concerned, is the most concerned, is that it would potentially be an unfunded mandate if we had to hire independent evaluators. So, I think our first preference, obviously, would be able to fill the requirements from within and not have that concern coming. Again, we just, it's, it's in the infancy stage. We really haven't had anything fleshed out. There have been documents that have been released by NISBA and NISCUS in the last couple of days that are giving us kind of an overview, but there are a lot of pieces that still haven't been finalized, so we'll have to give you updates on that.
Okay, um, the state aid information that we've received has not changed our tax levy limit. Our maximum allowable tax levy increase for next year is two point seven two percent. And as a general rule, eligible homeowners will be reimbursed for these increases if the school district complies with requirements. And it is our plan, and we're on target with that, that we will, um, we will comply with those requirements, which is, um, not exceeding the cap, which is the two point seven two percent, and, um, submitting our plan that we have efficiency, um, which is one percent of last year's, uh, tax levy, which is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We need to show that, um, through efficiencies and shared services that we've saved that amount. Not that we've cut the budget by that amount, but that we were able to show efficiencies of that amount. In our budget, we do have revenue other than state aid and taxes. There are several categories, um, which really are not material amounts, um, donations, well, I'm not talking about the foundation that is very material, that's accounted for separately. I'm talking about, um, maybe donations that we get from Box Tops and Target. Those are not a huge impact on our general fund budget. Of course, the foundation and the booster clubs and the PTA, those are very generous donations, but they're not considered when I'm talking about the general fund budget. I just wanna make that clear. That, there's a, another category of significance in the budget, which is tuition from other districts, specifically Garrison. We will see a decrease in the tuition revenue from fifteen sixteen, but not as large a de- decrease as we thought that we were going to experience.
I'll add a little bit to that. Um, the incoming class of ninth graders from Garrison next year is a small class to begin with. And there were fourteen potential students that could tuition into Haldane. There was, um, we were pleased that a great percentage of those students chose Haldane. Ten of the fourteen students will be attending Haldane next year. Two will be attending, um, the, the other option of a high school, and two will be in private school. So, um, where it could have been dramatically different, we're glad that, that that's not the case for us. And we also love to have the kids come, so it's a win-win for everybody. So it's a win-win for everybody.
And how many Garrison kids do we have graduating this year? Do you know?
I believe we have 13.
Okay.
We've got 10 of the 14.
10 of the 14.
That's pretty good.
So which brings us to budget proposal number one, which is, if you recall, we've been talking about two budget proposals. One, proposal two was if we did not get any more aid, because we were worried about that. We didn't know what we were going to get. Budget proposal one include, included many educational enhancements, which we'll be going over very soon. But just in a nutshell, proposal number one, the total budget's $22,879,325. That's a 2.11% spending increase. And as I said, it includes all the enhancements that we've been describing during the budget development process. And the next two slides details those enhancements. And again, I'm going to let Dr. Bowers describe those.
So we're very pleased with the number of potential areas. If this is the approved budget, that we could return to the Haldane School District. Some will be additional areas. And so I'll delineate all of them. The first area here is a continuation of our staff development efforts. And this will include not only in-service training that happens on a regular basis and a consistent basis here in the school district, but it's also sending our teachers out to areas that will enhance and refine their pedagogical expertise. There are certain areas, as we will see in our, our discussions so far this year, that we have focused on, like the project-based learning and the learning strategy instruction, which includes use of the workshop model. We've brought in targeted staff developers in both areas, and this will continue. We would also like to send our teachers to areas that they have an interest in to come, become, as I said, the, the best pedagogues possible. This will be especially helpful with some of the new requirements that are coming in. I think that one of the things that I've been saying to our teachers, that even with the new requirements, you know, luckily, Haldane is in the best place that we could be to, to help our teachers with whatever areas they feel, if there is areas of need, that we, that we could help support those. So we have the continuation staff development. We're looking at two technology-related integration or innovation specialists that are related to some of the areas that we just discussed. There is a new position, a discover, innovate, and create teacher that will be hired by the district. If, and this is supported by the Board of Education, and this is indeed the one that, the one budget that we support. The discover, innovate, and create teacher will be housed in the Makerspace and will be a K-12 co-teacher for the district. It will allow teachers to continue on with some of their new technologically advanced courses and, and opportunities for project-based learning. The second course is a technology, excuse me, second person is a technology integration specialist, who will be the person that helps bring the new technological integration into the district. We're looking at things like moving to a Google platform. We're looking at bringing more project-based learning into the district, district-wide. We're looking at creation of a potential CTE 89 group of students, all of which this technology integration specialist would work with. Additionally, they would be troubleshooting throughout the district, and we would be offsetting some of the costs that we presently pay to specialists, and it would move into this line. So there would be doing multiple jobs in the one category. We're also looking at integration or instructional literacy support that has been pulled out, especially in the primary grades. And we've had, we had more support in the early years for literacy support, which unfortunately had to be cut. This is the area we are saying definitely needs to be returned. We know how important the first three to four years of, of our, for our kindergartens, first and second graders in literacy. And if we do not have the support, our kids will not be reading on grade level to this, to the extent that they could potentially at the end of third grade. And the fourth is the middle school, high school alternative program, which is the 89 program I just cited. And this would be a, a group of students that would have a home base that were, that was CTE-related, which is, would be helpful to keep them involved. And do you want to?
No.
Okay, keep going. Okay. We also have in the next slide, where we have a SRO, SPO that has been placed in the budget right now. The school peace officer, the SPO, is in the budget. We are presently having conversations with Putnam County to help offset the costs, at least for next year, so we could hire an SRO, a student resource officer, as opposed to an SPO. Once again, we are the only district that has a high school in Putnam County that does not have an SPO or an SRO. And we feel that it is time to bring this back into the community as well. We have increased opportunities, which means additional courses that would be offered in the sci, in science, mainly physics, and home and careers next year. If this is also supported, we'd be increasing our .6 FTE in science to 1.0, bringing it back to full-time. We'd also be looking at increasing co-curricular opportunities. Three different groups, Model UN, Pathways for Success, and ROAR are the three groups that we've discussed bringing and adding into our student co-curricular opportunities. And we have $10,000 that's in the budget, which would allow for contingent coaching funds for next year. Of the, the three different seasons that we had, each season, we had to hire an assistant coach. And we had to look for different types of finances within the budget that would help offset the, the cost of these coaches. So this doesn't repeat itself. We would be putting funds into the budget, so it was easier to recommend.
Okay, one of the board's budgeting parameters was that if there was any operating surplus or extra revenue that came our way over what was necessary for proposal one should be considered to reduce appropriated fund balance. And that's something that you've been hearing us talk about quite a bit. We have a, a high percentage of appropriated fund balance. So it would be prudent to start chipping away at that. And there would be some funds available with this proposal. Also wanted to remind everyone that the district will have a vehicle proposition. We'll be asking for one big bus, one van, and a maintenance vehicle to replace vehicles that are not going to pass inspection again. And the total tentative proposition is $180,000, funded through a ban, which is a bond anticipation note, which is payable over five years. We do have allocation annually in the budget for bond anticipation note payments. And with this particular proposition, there would be no payment until the 1617 budget. So when some debt service and some bans are paid off, new debt would come on to replace that. And, but I just want to point out that this is one of the higher propositions. So there would be a slating since 1617 to those lines. I don't want you to think that it's a complete wash, but for next year's budget, will not be impacted by that. The library proposition, we have been approached by the Butterfield Library, and that they would like to place a separate funding proposition on the school district ballot. The school district doesn't have a choice in that. If, if they would like to have funding through the school district, we must put it on our ballot. If the proposition passes, the school district has to collect the taxes and pay them directly to the library. And the amount authorized for the library service will show up as a separate line on your tax bill. Just want to point out that this does not impact our requirements for being under the tax cap. It's a separate levy. But it will be paid through your school tax bill. And the last slide, which is always the ugly slide, where I have to inform you about the contingent budget. A couple of years ago, the requirements and the rules for contingent budget changed. And for the past few years, in the event that voters rejected districts' budget twice, the board must enact a contingent budget. And the contingent budget is, contains no increase in tax levy over the prior year. And considering that our 2.72% increase in tax levy equates to just over $490,000, if the budget is defeated twice, the board would have to make a hard decision to reduce the budget by $490,402.
And one thing I would like to clarify before we go to questions, and this was something that was asked of me earlier today. There was a question as to whether or not that we are recommending any cuts for next year. The answer is no, we are not cutting. We are actually replenishing, or we hope to replenish. And so this is a very positive move forward. And we're glad that the state funding allowed us to go to the place that we will be recommending now, tonight.
Great. Thank you, Anne. Thank you. Diana, Dr. Bowers? Before I go to board questions, and then we'll get public questions, I just want to walk quickly through in 60 seconds how we got here from a timeline standpoint. It might just help kind of put everything in context. Late December, early January, we discussed the budget calendar and also a different way of presenting the budget this year. This is different from what we've done in years past, where we've kind of had wish lists, and then it kind of got chopped down to realities. This year, it was more of, what was initially proposed was more of a solid, this is what we think we can fund, and this is what we actually need. So it was less of a high, get to here. It was more of, let's start strong right from the start. And I think it's been a positive experience for everybody. January 20th, we adopted our budget calendar, and we also discussed a rollover budget, which is basically everything in the budget that rolls over without an increase, except for contractual obligations. At that meeting, we also discussed board parameters, one of which specifically was staying within the tax cap. I think we were all pretty adamant about that. January, February 3rd, February 24th, and March 10th, we got three different presentations with these realistic expectations of budgets. February 3rd was operations and maintenance support services. February 24th was instruction. And March 10th was a recap of both. And then that, what has came up with proposition one and proposition two, or proposal one, proposal two. All of those were contingent on some information from New York State, which we didn't have. We reviewed these again on March 17th, again, without any New York State information. We got a New York State budget on April 1st, and we're here today with at least some clarity as to what we've got. For anyone out there, or the board as well, who wants to revisit all of the details and do it in a very efficient manner, go to our board docs page and look up February 3rd, February 24th, and March 10th. And you can watch the minutes and the videos of those meetings. And you can probably scan right through to the budget parts if you didn't want to watch the whole meeting. And in the course of probably 75 minutes, you've got all three presentations. And it really does a good job, including transportation, including the library proposition, and kind of summarizes everything. So that's kind of where, how we got here. And now we're here. We're later on going to talk about whether or not we do need to add an extra meeting, which was April 14th. By law, we have to adopt a budget by April 24th, if I've got that right. And our next scheduled regular meeting is April 21st. But we'll talk about that a little later. So that's kind of a timeline of how we got here. That's a way to go back and refresh everyone's memory through the wonders of YouTube. And here we are. So board questions? Start with John, go that way.
I thought we were starting with Pete this time. No, I mean, I think it's great. We, you know, I unfortunately wasn't able to make the last meeting. I was out of town for work. But, you know, we talked about this, you know, before I left. And, and, you know, I've been in touch. And I think it's great that we're able to actually potentially restore some of the things that either have been cut or that we couldn't do in the past. You know, it'd still be nice if they would restore the entire gap elimination, but we'll take what we can get. You know, one of the things that a lot of people have asked me about, just, you know, around town and stuff, I think the SRO, SPO is something that a lot of people have said, you know, when are we going to get that back? So I'm glad to see that potentially the money is there to get at least the SPO, if not the SRO. So, yeah, I mean, I'm definitely in favor of it, whether we do that tonight or some other night. I think it's great.
Jan?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. The, the create, innovate, discover teacher? I was just wondering what certification that is?
Well, it's actually an interesting question, which I had about an hour-long conversation with State Ed about, about a month ago, to get, to get clarification with that. There is actually a new technology specialist certification that what you could use for that position, or you could put a teacher on assignment. And so we could take somebody that is presently in a classroom and put them into that position, and they would be a teacher on assignment. In order to keep the seniority, they would have to be at least .4 of the, of the full-time equivalent in that certification area. So if we, for example, had an elementary teacher that took over that position, they would have to teach elementary students, not just a class, but any elementary students for at least .4 or two days a week. And the rest would be throughout the district. And so those are two options. We could either hire somebody with the certification, the technology certification, which is different from the traditional technology certification. This is a new certification area. Or we could put a teacher on assignment.
So the, do we know how much money? This is for Anne. Do we know how much money we're thinking might be allocated to the fund balance? To the ballpark, or?
Right now, the amount over what it would cost to fund proposal number one is about $45,000.
Okay.
Okay.
And my last question is about the TRS smoothing option. We haven't heard about that yet, have we?
No. What I'd like to do is wait and really come back to the board with, with options. I know that one of the parameters was to withdraw from the, from the program. I just want to make sure that we do it at the right time. It's, it's, it's definite that we're going to withdraw and not stay in it for the whole life of the program. Whether or not it's this year or next year, I think we, we can't tell yet. I want to see in what direction the TRS rates go. We'll know more into the year. We have until June of 2016 to opt out for the 1516 year. The budget supports us being in the smoothing option right now, as it stands. The rates for, the real actual TRS rates are lower than the smoothing option rates. So there is a bit of a gap. It's not a big gap, but it's in there. If we opt out, then we're going to have some fund balance to put towards our payoff, because we're going to have to start paying that debt that we've created in TRS over five years. If we decide to stay in it, we still have that gap. What TRS does is they take that and subtract it what, what we owe. So either way, it's moving towards paying that off. But I want to make sure that we opt out at the right time, because once you opt out, you're... opt out at the right time, because once you opt out, you, you can't get back in.
So if we were to approve Proposal 1 as-is, with the money allocated as-is, and then in sometime in June, you said, you know what, we should really opt out of TRS, now's the time, and we went to do that, we would take the money from the fund balance?
Right. And put it in, into a reserve for when the payoff starts? Because we do have some money in reserve for retirement contributions, which is where the board had decided to put that money from last year, because when we went into it, we had that savings, and knowing that we're going to have a payback down the road. So it's not relevant to budget adoption whether or not you decide tonight that we're going to pull out of it now, or we're going to stay in it another year and take the credit that they're giving us. We still have a whole year to decide that.
Okay. Great.
Pete?
Yeah, really just one question. We have to demonstrate, we've talked about this before, so perhaps you could just, this would just be a recap, but we have to demonstrate about $180,000 in, in shared savings. Can you just recap where we're going to find that?
Well, there are multiple places that we can go. Right now, we're, we are in the process of formalizing a relationship with the Putnam Valley and Garrison School Districts. We are going to be calling ourselves the Hudson River Valley Education Consortium, and we are going to be sharing the services in special education with the other two districts. We're going to be creating programs based on grade levels that we can send students from all three districts to. And we will be tuitioning in at lower rates than we would have tuitioned in, in the past by this shared service. And so in some cases, we'll be taking students that are in presently higher-priced placements and bringing them into the consortium, depending on what district is, is running the classes for that, those specific grades. It depends on the student. But, so, we are going to be tuitioning kids into Haldane next year. We are going to be tuitioning students that a lesser rate into the consortium, and all of these are sharing services. We're also looking at working with other districts for support. Right now, we're in conversations with the Yorktown School District about bartering staff development services, so we're not paying for two potential staff development costs. We're looking at potentially having Yorktown send their teachers to us for PBL training, and we would be sending our teachers to them for co-teaching training as we begin to have more co-teachers in the classrooms and bring special ed or literacy specialists into the classrooms. So we do have a number of, of classes that do have co-teachers, and we want to make sure that they're well-trained in order to do that. So those are the areas, in addition to some others that we're sharing. If, if there's a transportation cost that we can share, or other areas, and Ann has some areas that she's been looking at potentially putting into that $180,000. So we are, we are creating new things. We're also looking at things that have been, have occurred in the past as well.
Okay, great. Now, in terms of the, the consortium?
Yep.
So we'll be bringing kids into Haldane that haven't, haven't been, that aren't here currently?
Correct.
So that surely will have some impact on our staffing here?
It will have some impact, and we-
Is, is, is there a cost associated with that?
No.
Or what kind of an impact could we expect to see?
We, we presently have a program, and the program that we're looking at accepting consortium students into next year is kind of an intermediate-level program that would, we presently have students in the program, so we would have, we have extra seats available. So the teachers already exist, and the supports already exist.
Good. So just to follow up on Peter's question, with regards to getting the, the taxpayers getting their rebates, we need to stay within the cap, which we will.
Correct.
And then the second piece was creating this $180,000 of efficiencies, which you believe and are confident that we should meet with no problem.
Correct.
Correct.
And it's over multiple years. How many years are we pulling from, two? For that $180,000?
Yes, we are.
Okay, got it. Okay, just a couple of questions. Pete, any more questions? Okay. What was the total increase in state aid that we got based on the governor's budget? Is it the gap restoration plus the $5,725? Is that basically what it is?
It's basically what it is, yes.
Okay.
So the total for, and this, these are the actual budget runs, the total that Haldane is, is getting without considering the change in building aid, because they give two different levels, we will be getting a 6.23% increase, or it's $166,750. They also give another value, which for us is just slightly higher, is the change with building aid and all the others. So that would be just, just a slight bit higher, which is 173,069. And the PCNR did suggest that, or they, they reported that we were going to get about $350,000 in new state money. We are not. We're getting 166,750 in new state money. And I think what they did is they took those two values and they added them together. So what was actually reported was not the reality. We would have loved to have $350,000 come to us, but we, the actual number, not including building aid, is 166,750.
Yeah, I think that's what was, they added the two versus just picking one or the other.
Right.
And I think there's probably 10 people in New York State that has had to read these things. The state aid runs, unfortunately, one of them works for us. So that's a good thing. The TIS, the Technology Integration Specialist, if I understand it correctly, that will now allow some of our man-hours that we divvy up in special ed to be more focused in the special ed field? If I understand it correctly?
I'm sorry, which, which group?
The Technology Integration Specialist will be focusing on technology, which will allow our current person who's got 18 titles-
Oh, I see, yes.
-to spend more time on-
Yes.
-special ed.
We have, one of our administrators is, is really, has multiple positions that they're kind of, it's a conglomerate that's been put together, and we realize in order to do them well, we have to make sure that we have enough manpower. So yes, the Technology Integration Specialist would take some of the responsibilities and allow that to occur more fluidly.
Okay. Anything new on kindergarten?
We are still under the 66, which is kind of our tipping point of being concerned. And we have, we're starting this kindergarten screening this week, and so at this point, we're still moving forward with the three sections. The literacy specialist slash special ed person that is in the budget at this point, if we go over the 66, a greater percentage of that person's time will be spent in kindergarten. And if we do not, then it'll be spread out into other grade levels. So either way, it's a win-win for the district.
Okay, got it. And then just to reemphasize that what this is all about isn't necessarily just spending money. It's also a reallocation of resources to get you where you are now.
Correct.
Which is what we've been emphasizing in the last few meetings, which I think is great, because that's what everybody wants to hear. So, good. All right, thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I mean, I think this is actually a very, very good budget, given the world of the tax cap. Last year, I think we got short-changed on the formulas, and it was an extremely difficult year, more so than it's ever been. This seems to bring it a little more back to reality, and the ability to add back some things which are standard basics, and we still have a ways to go, but this is definitely a good start. Okay, good. Questions from the public on budget? Before I bring up a topic? Nothing? Okay. Later on, we are scheduled to talk about whether or not we should meet on the 14th. Originally, we were talking about maybe adopting the budget on April 14th in a new meeting. And I just wanted to get your thoughts on what you guys think.
I feel like we're pretty confident that, I mean, I should say, I feel pretty confident about going with Proposal Number 1 as, as it is. I don't know if we need another meeting. I would feel comfortable approving that on April 21st, I guess is my point.
I have a second.
Okay. Pete?
Yeah, same thing. I mean, we, we had penciled in the one on the 14th in case we needed it, and I think it's clear that we don't need it, so.
Okay. And Evan piped in from wherever he was this morning that he would go along with that concept as well, though he technically can't pipe in, but he did informally. So I agree with you. I don't think there's anything new that we haven't already touched on and hashed out that we need to get back together for another meeting. We can do it on April 21st, so maybe if we could just adjust whatever we have to adjust to make that noticeable for the public. I do have a couple of suggestions that I will do later on, and I will either email them, or I'll stop in on how to just re-position what we're going to approve, so it's a little clearer for someone who doesn't have the background that we've been living on. Just bullet points that makes it a little clearer to the outsiders, which I think will be helpful on April 21st.
Great.
Okay. Good?
Good.
Good, good. All right, that's budget.
Okay, ready to move on to superintendent's report?
Yep.
Okay, there are just a couple of things that I would like to share. Next week, we enter into the 3th through 8th grade testing season, and there seems to be a lot of inertia developing out in New York State about the opt-out possibilities in state testing. I did create and put on our website, and I believed it was sent to parents today, or it could have been yesterday, from the middle elementary school, a letter just explaining this, our position, Haldane's position on the opt-out issue. Basically, we are suggesting that students do take the tests. We are also letting parents know that there are really no opt-out provisions in state or federal statute that would allow it to happen. With that said, we understand that there are still some concerns, but it is the, the recommendation of the district that students take the test. So that's the first. The second, I just wanted to give you a quick rundown, run, and share with you some of the, the very positive days we had for our superintendent's conference days. And as parents who have students that are staying home on those days, I think it's important for you to know how well utilized they are while, while the teachers are here. And we had some great days of really looking at bringing in learning strategy instruction into our classrooms and using the workshop model in, as a K-12 model. We had staff developers here that were working with the teachers in the elementary school. We also had a staff developer who was secondary, which is unusual for these kinds of presentations, where we had these, our teachers watched science lessons using the workshop model in a high school classroom and talk about different ways of differentiation and presentation that it can occur. So they were very well utilized. We thank our parents for giving us the opportunity to have those days. And the P E B C will be returning to, with us next year for both the October and the March conference days.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, any questions for Dr. Bowers? Pete, anything? Okay. Committee Minutes Arts Booster Club, any questions? Just reiterate, I love these guys. They are doing such great stuff, and their minutes are really good. They've really kind of gotten some traction, and they're a relatively new organization, which is amazing. So I love these guys. I'm going to leave it at that. Communication from the public on anything we've talked about? No? Correspondence. We have a letter, which is a handwritten note, which is a dying art, from the Haldane Foreign Language Department. I won't read it, but verbatim, it's basically just thanking funding for the immersion program, which has been going on for years. Great program, so thank you to them, and it's in our Board Docs if everybody wants to read it, and handwritten as well, which I, I'm partial to. Consent agenda minutes, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda financial?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda personnel, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unfinished business. Dr. Bowers, you want to start as well?
I'm getting there. Okay. Unfinished business, PBL workshops. We held our third day of our second institute, Project-Based Learning Institute, yesterday, where Stacia Snow, our staff developer, returned to us, and we had our teachers report out on some of the wonderful PBL experiences they had, they've conducted in their classrooms. This was a little bit different than the first kind of celebratory day, because there were a lot of, of other problems that came about as the result of snow, as these teachers began and launched their projects and, and went through them. And so they kept starting and stopping and starting and stopping, and so that was one of the, the concerns that we heard. But that was, it was a very positive day. It was equally as positive as the end of the last cohort, and that continues to move forward, so it was great.
Great.
We also had a recent meeting with the Communities That Care Coalition, and the Communities That Care Coalition continues to support the Haldane School community and the neighboring communities on this very important work that they're doing, and helping students make good choices and stay away from behaviors that would be detrimental to them. And so that continues. We will hear a lot more from them next year.
Great. And just two public events that the group is publicizing. One is Thursday, April 23rd, at 7 o'clock, at St. Christopher's Inn. Stories of Hope is how it's titled, and it's basically a community drug forum. There'll be representatives from various organizations, as well as a bunch of people from the Communities That Care Coalition. And then Medication Take Back Day on Saturday, April 25th, from 9 to 2, and it's going to be at Putnam Hospital Center in Carmel. And again, something that the Coalition is also working on. And also just, that group is really, I think, starting to take hold, and I know there's a lot of representation around it. I know Nancy Montgomery from the Town Board's really taken an active role in it, which we think is great, and I know a lot of the Haldane administrators are as well. So I think this is all good stuff that can only hopefully start to make some progress.
And I, I have to say, at each of the meetings, and it's a regular meeting, monthly meeting, in addition to some of the evening meetings, and we've been having well, I would say, well over 20 people attend each one. So there's a lot of recidivism there, and there's a lot of care and concern, and so, you know, we, hopefully this will continue on this very positive track next year.
Good. Thank you. Questions from the public? Okay. M1, new business?
This is the Committee for Special Education and Preschool Education Recommendations, and the recommended action is that the board approves the recommendations by the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as indicated.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. M2, policy review. This is our second reading. And there's a whole slew from here. They're kind of all related. I'm going to defer this to Dr. Bowers, and I think this is the one that Jen was involved with.
Yes, and we had some, some suggestions and revisions made to the policies that you read last time. And if you go through the, the policies, the revisions are in green. And so the, these have been refined, and it will continue to be refined if there are things that you would like to see included.
Yeah, I guess if there's just any questions on the revisions?
Revisions, yeah. So each, the, the multiple policies, we're, again, the policies we're looking at are our acceptable use policy, our electronic communication and friending policy, information security breach policies, technology access and security, computerized- things that you would like to see included.
Yeah, I guess if there's just any questions on the revisions.
So each, the multiple policies, again, the policies we're looking at are acceptable use policy, our electronic communication and friending policy, information security breach policies, technology access and security, computerized information resources, and children's internet protection.
I mean, we went through it, you know, kind of line by line, and came up with a few additional things to think about, and that's what's in green text, but the overall concepts that kept, keep getting driven home in each of them, and it kind of repetition, 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 is that, or the new concepts that we're driving home, is that the, if a student or a staff member is using a district device, whether it's a computer or an iPad, that that information should not be, nobody should think that that's private information, that that's information that can be accessed if needed. And then the other concept is that if anything happens off-site, so if a student or a staff member is doing anything with digital stuff, even if it's their own digital device, that somehow negatively impacts another student or the school environment, that they are under the district's umbrella of rules and regulations.
Okay, thanks. So really, the changes in the green are just minor, and they're nothing material from when we spoke the last time, if I understand it correctly?
Yeah.
And if anything, they just clarified the point.
So it's well-understood, the areas that we're trying to support-
Yeah.
...within the policies.
Yeah, so just a little kind of driving it home.
Okay. Thoughts? We could adopt, we could push it to a third reading and become more familiar with it? What do you guys want to do?
Go ahead and adopt at this point, looks good to me.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay, that sounds good to me. Do we motion and to adopt these?
Would you like me to read the recommendation first?
Sure.
Okay. So the recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the amendments as noted to the following policies: acceptable use of digital technology, electronic communications and friending, information security breach, information technology access and security, staff use of computerized information resources, and Children's Internet Protection Act, the Internet Content Filtering and Safety Policy.
Do I have a motion to accept those six?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Guys, the good work.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thanks, Jen. Got to put you to work.
And then there's the one at the district credit card is the other.
Oh. Did we just do that one? Or no?
Is that a separate?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with the change, it's one sentence of something, just as clarity. Motion to accept policy 5321, use of district credit cards and charge counts.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We already did M3. The board's not going to meet on April 14th. We will meet regularly scheduled on April 21st, and we will adopt a budget on April 21st, which will go to the voters on May 19th. M4 is a new item. I just want to throw out there very quickly, Board of Ed succession planning. Just to throw out there, as you know, my term expires on May 19th at the end of the election, which is a little unusual, because I was appointed. So at the end of the election results, I'm retired. Someone will take that spot, and by law, if I understand it correctly, Jen, as vice president, will automatically become president. So I got all that right? Julia?
It's not that she becomes president, it's that she's able to serve as, serve the duties of the president as vice president.
Okay, got it. So what I was thinking is to just ease that process, and I call it sea legs, for lack of a better term, I was thinking, starting at the next meeting, April 21st, is to have Jen run the meetings and run the next three, and I obviously am still president, and I'll be here to help, but she can get her sea legs and just kind of get her feet wet. So before we actually went ahead and did it, I just wanted to run it by you guys and see if you had any issues. Dr. Bowers and I spoke about it, and I think-
I'm sorry, what?
You're okay? And you're still okay with the concept?
This is the first I'm hearing about this. Yeah, no, it's fine. So it's kind of like having training wheels on, which I think is great.
Right. So we're okay with that? You guys all right with it?
Yep.
Concept-wise? Okay, and then Julia, maybe if you could pipe back at some point at one of the next two meetings as to how this all plays out, with who gets what seat and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I have an email into our attorney to get clarification on that.
Okay, because it's a little quirky, if I understand it correct.
It is.
Okay. So we'll report on that at one of the other meetings? Okay. Anything else from the board? Communication from the public? Anything? I'm going to make a motion to convene into executive session for the, what do we call it?
This is a student, discussion of a student issue.
Discussion of a student issue. When we come back, there'll be no action taken, so you can, we'll go home and not have to worry about us trying to do something we're not supposed to be doing. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for coming.